Yeah. Yeah. That's my, I mean, I, I, I. It's your world, Chris. And I'm, she's, he's, well. That's what I'm gonna say. I don't know. If you're not, that's your life, not the pair. She be, I'll, I'll, yeah. I'll have her, you know. You know, I didn't get to do it. You know. You know.
Computer Science at LSU Health Shreveport's Dr. Liz Disbrow, Chris Kevell, Stephen Alexander, and Karen Stokes identified a new blood buyer marker in Alzheimer's dementia patients which could lead to significant breakthroughs in treatment. The team's work was supported by an Institutional Development Award from the National Institute of General Medical Sciences of the National Institute of Health. Lastly, LSU A&amp;M has seven assistant professors that have been awarded NSF's Most Prestigious Award available for an individual faculty member, the Faculty Early Career Development Award. The Career Award is given to faculty members with extraordinary research capabilities and a strong commitment to teaching. The awardees include LSU Chemistry Assistant Professor Naami El-Ghriji, LSU Mechanical Engineering Assistant Professor Manus Gortilla, LSU Biological Engineering Assistant Professor Philip Young, LSU Mechanical Engineering Assistant Professor Genevieve Pollardi, LSU Geology and Geophysics Assistant Professor Patricia Pers- Patricia Pers- Persuade, LSU Civil and Environmental Engineering Assistant Professor Samuel Snow, and lastly, LSU Division of Electrical and Computer Engineering Assistant Professor John Zhu. We have lots of amazing things happening across all of our campuses, but particularly here at LSU A. Congratulations on all your success, and we're extremely proud of all that you're doing. So, thank you all. At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Haney to present the agenda items for today.
And Supervisor Jones, I'll go through the items on the agenda, the consent agenda, final item that the President will present, and I'll present those items to the committee for approval.
Perfect, thank you.
So, the first is an LSU A&amp;M proposal of a letter of intent for an MSN Architecture. Currently, the School of Architecture has the Bachelor and Master of Architecture. The Master of Architecture is a professional-oriented program. The proposed program is a 36-hour, research-based program requiring a thesis. And this, the National Accrediting Board has prioritized the Masters of Architecture as the first professional degree over the Bachelor of Architecture. And the Master of Architecture had historically been the terminal post-professional degree that prepared students for teaching in academia. However, the Masters of Architecture has now been professionalized and advanced graduate research was moved to more specialized graduate curricula like this one proposed. The expected enrollment is three to five students initially, growing to six to 10 students per year, and there are no major costs associated, as the courses are already taught, between the Master of Architecture and the Doctor of Design degree programs. Net revenue will more than cover the expenditures. The second is from LSU Health Science Center in Shreveport and is a letter of intent for the PhD in Pathology and Translational Pathobiology. Even though pathology is viewed as a medical field, the PhD is necessary as individuals must have a background in cell and molecular biology coupled with advanced disease process training. PhD graduates in this field are highly sought after by industry, government agencies, academia, and research companies. This program will concentrate mostly on cardiovascular research, which puts scholarship and predoctoral fellowships in prime position for collaboration with the Center of Cardiovascular Diseases and Sciences at the Feist-Wiler Cancer Center. All costs will be covered by expected enrollment revenue as well as grant funding. Third is from LSU A&amp;M, and it is an undergraduate certificate in Childcare Administration. This marks LSU A&amp;M's first undergraduate certificate, which acts much like the administrative certification structure for K-12 educational administrators, like school principals. This certificate will provide students with the two required courses needed to advance in early childhood careers while also providing necessary courses in leadership and early childhood development instruction and assessment. This will be a stackable credential and will be offered online, a modest projected enrollment of 15 students in year one, increasing to 22 by year four, and the costs will not exceed the projected revenue. LSU A&amp;M also has a number of naming opportunities, and among the first is the Mr. and Mrs. John W. Hawey Family Recognition Wall. John W. Hawey is Senior Vice President and Chief Information Officer of Louisiana Workers' Compensation Corporation. He was a member of the Board of Directors of Tiger Athletic Foundation from 1997 to 2004 and is an adjunct professor at LSU. His family has given several generous donations to the preservation of Tiger Stadium, and Scott Woodward has nominated the third recognition wall in the South Bowl Plaza of Tiger Stadium to be named in his and his family's honor. And then we have the Clark and Laura Boyce Gallery within the College of Art and Design, and I am pleased that Dean Alquis Salakis of the College of Art and Design at the LSU A&amp;M campus is here to tell us a little bit about this recognition.
Good afternoon. It's going to be a little. I'm here on behalf of my college to ask you to approve the naming of this new gallery and student art store, something very new, after Laura and Clark Boyce. Laura and Clark Boyce were people that always supported the art. They have supported the greater arts community at Baton Rouge and in Louisiana in general, but also they have supported LSU, they have supported our college, and the Museum of Art, the LSU Museum of Art. This is, of course, a recognition of their gift. You know, without their gift, we would not have a new gallery in the center of campus. You know, that would be a part of everybody's everyday life. It brings art, not as a sort of an exceptional event, but something that is, you know, at the heart of the campus. But it's also a recognition of this kind of loyalty to LSU, loyalty to our college, loyalty to the arts, and a very timely recognition of the fact that this loyalty and this commitment is continued through the Boyces' sisters, the daughters of Laura and Clark Boyce, and especially Emily Boyce, who has been supporting us all this time. So, of course, this is also an invitation for all of you to come and see the gallery and see the art, and the gallery is starting in September. Thank you.
Dean Salakis.
I'd like to just comment on the family. But our faith.
Yeah.
The family's made this contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have the LSU A&amp;M Edward J. Walters Jr. Room in the Law Center complex, and I believe President Galligan has a few words to say.
I do indeed, and I speak for both myself and interim Dean Lee Ann Lockridge. And I know there's a storm coming, and we got to move fast, but Ed Walters is absolutely one of my idols in the practice of law, and so I'm really excited to support the Law Center's request to name a room in honor of Edward J. Walters Jr. He is one of the most passionate and vocal advocates for LSU and the Law Center and the state. He was the Law Center's Distinguished Alumnus of the Year in 2015. He served as an adjunct professor for more than 30 years, served as an instructor within our trial advocacy program. He's given his time, his talents, and his treasure to the Law Center, and he was a leader in conceiving of and generating interest in the Classroom-to-Courtroom Project. Over the last 10 years, the Law Center has really begun to focus on skills training and an advocacy program, and Ed has been one of the leaders, but we only had one courtroom. So, what Ed did is he inspired a group of people to raise funds so we could convert some of our classrooms to additional courtrooms. And that project is proceeding apace. The first one is almost done, and it's made possible in part by a very generous gift from Ed's law firm. So, with that, the Law Center wishes to honor Ed Walters for his decades of dedication and contribution by naming Room 107 of LSU's Paul M. Abear Law Center the Edward J. Walters Jr. Room, and we fully support this naming honor. Thank you, Provost Haney.
And then there are a few other items. One is to terminate a graduate certificate in early childhood education. This has not had sufficient enrollment, and so we are asking for its termination. The LSU A&amp;M is also asking for a change in the degree designation of the Bachelor of Science in Computer Sciences, and this is a nomenclature for the campus so that there will be consistency, and the degree designation will be a BSCS. And then we are excited that we have renewals for namings for three of the Olin Career Center Rooms, the Chevron Workforce Development Center, the BASF Recruitment Center Lobby, and the Campus Federal Financial Literacy Lab. Each of those have renewed their gifts, and we are very grateful for their partnership and their continued support, as we are for the renewal of the Shell Tutorial Center. The Shell has renewed again their support for '21 through '26, and we are again grateful for the partnership with Shell and for each of these industry partners who help to support our students and their success on our campus. So, I submit all of these items to you in Globo. We have one remaining item, but I'll submit these to you for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Is there a motion to approve all of the agenda items as presented?
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Starnes, seconded by Supervisor Williams. All right, all in favor, please signify. Well, actually, I think we need a roll call vote. Ms. Griffith, please, call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Mr. Arminter?
Yes.
Aronson?
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Seven yeas, none of them.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith.
And then the final item I'll turn it over to.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Galligan.
Great, the COVID resolutions. Let me start by thanking my colleagues for their public comments, and let me also say once again that we at LSU want every student, faculty, and staff member in our campus community to be vaccinated. Promoting and providing vaccinations to our campus communities has been one of our top priorities ever since the vaccine became available, and it will continue to be as we move through the summer and into the fall. We're strongly encouraging our campus community to get vaccinated by providing incentives. We'll actually roll out a very aggressive incentive campaign next Wednesday. We were going to do it on Monday, but we put it off to Wednesday because the governor's is going to start on Monday. We want to make the vaccine available to everyone. If you're on the LSU campus and you haven't been vaccinated, come by Tiger Stadium, and it will get you vaccinated. We want to communicate why it's important to get vaccinated and dispel any misconceptions about being vaccinated. To date, more than 12,000 of our students and employees have reported to us that they've been vaccinated, including about 60-plus percent of our faculty and staff, but as my colleagues indicate, the student numbers are significantly lower, at about 27%. Now, over the months, I've heard from legislators and others about the concerns of their constituents. I understand why those questions are important, but we've also heard from our constituents. Overwhelmingly, through three resolutions, a faculty senate resolution, a faculty council resolution, and a student government resolution, our constituents have urged us to mandate vaccination for all students. Faculty, staff, and students want to get back to normal, and the resolutions express how the groups believe that vaccinations are key to us achieving that goal. These are our most important constituents, and I value their input, and I take it seriously, just as I have valued their input and concerns throughout the pandemic, as we have developed and implemented our safety guidelines, policies, and procedures for operating during the COVID-19 outbreak. If it were solely up to me, I'll tell you what I would do. I am vaccinated. I got it, I got the shots, it didn't hurt, I didn't have any reaction. I did get a shingle shot, and I had a reaction, but the vaccine, the COVID vaccine, no reaction. Now, while we've heard from faculty, staff, and students, we've also heard from others who are exposed to the idea of requiring vaccinations. Anyway, to me, the benefits of everyone being vaccinated are clear, but there are significant legal questions. And I do appreciate that the Faculty Council Resolution stated that if it's determined that we can't legally require vaccinations, then we have to take alternative safety measures to protect our campus community. We have put together a group of faculty and administrators to analyze those plans and to work with our EOC, our health experts, and our administrative team, and I'm sure that President Tate feels the same way that I do about these issues. But for now, let me turn it over to my friend and our general counsel, Winston DeQueer, to just give us a landscape of the legal issues.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as we explained to the faculty in a meeting earlier this week, our office began researching the constitutional issues related to vaccinations and before that, testing, back in August of 2020. We initially focused on testing, and then around November, we realized we needed to get some research done on vaccinations. From the strictly constitutional standpoint, in order to mandate something, it requires a compelling state interest, and that compelling interest is largely based on the facts of the pandemic at the time. As we move forward into the spring of 2021, the facts started changing, and we began to focus on the current laws, the current state statute, which is Title 17170. If you take COVID aside, the state has a statute that mandates every student who presents themselves for registration in a public school has to present proof of vaccinations according to the LDH schedule, and our registrar has been requiring that proof since the beginning of time. COVID is not in that schedule, and it's not in that schedule because it's only authorized for emergency use. It would be great if LDH would put it in the schedule, but our authority to require it is based on what the state mandates in that LDH schedule. We've looked at the constitutional issues as to whether we could mandate it even though it's not included in the state law. It would be very difficult right now, given the current facts and the current infections rates, because the incidence of COVID are going down. There are a couple of other laws we have to be cognizant of. HB 498 was passed at the end of the legislative session. It prohibits discrimination against any person who's seeking any state service based on whether or not they've received the COVID vaccination, as long as it's designated for emergency use. That prohibition will not apply if it's not designated for emergency use, but right now, under this bill, we can't discriminate against anybody based on whether they have the COVID vaccine or not. There's another House resolution we need to be cognizant of, and that's House Resolution 20 that requires that all schools, when they, in their communications about requiring a COVID vaccine, must also disclose that the vaccine is optional, and you have a right under the state statute to opt out of it based on a medical reason or just putting an objection in writing. So, right now, the landscape, the landscape is there are laws that allow public schools to mandate vaccinations, but it has to be done in conjunction with LDH, including the vaccination in the schedule for public school students. And our hands are, I'm not going to say our hands are tied, but it would be a major risk for us to try to stretch outside of that, given the current landscape.
Madam Chair, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present a resolution.
Yes.
I just want clarification, actually, before we move forward. So, based on the laws, is this lawful, what we're presenting here? Is this resolution something that we can?
Let's hear the resolution. I hadn't even heard, I don't know anything about it.
So, the resolutions you've heard were resolutions from the faculty and the students urging the board to act. And it's permitted. That's part of their role as the faculty, is to adopt resolutions, making suggestions for this board as the governing authority of the institution. I believe one of your peers has a resolution she wants to make as we receive this information as a suggestion for the board.
Okay.
Oh, that's this resolution, okay.
Ms. Warner?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to present for the board's approval. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University in Agriculture and Mechanical College, the board does hereby acknowledge and receive the resolution of the LSU A&amp;M Faculty Council pertaining to the requirement of COVID-19 vaccinations for students. And be it further resolved, the board urges and requests the Louisiana Department of Health to include, upon full approval by the FDA, the approved vaccinations for COVID-19 in its schedule of immunizations required for attendance at Louisiana public colleges and universities. And be it further resolved, the board endorses the use of a communication and incentive strategy to encourage the campus community to voluntarily vaccinate against COVID-19 until such time as the Louisiana Department of Health shall add COVID-19 vaccinations to its list of required immunizations.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, as I understand the law, even if the Department of Health would include COVID in the required immunizations, someone could still opt out?
Yes, that's always been the law.
That's, yeah, not just COVID, but any?
Any of the vaccination.
I'm sure it wouldn't be very many, but you don't know, but that...
I will tell you, prior to this year, very few people knew that exception existed in that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question and a couple of comments. Number one, I'm not for the resolution, because I don't want to tie our hands based on somebody else may or may not do something. Department of Health puts COVID on there, and then automatically now our rule goes into effect that we're going to mandate shots for all students. You know, the, I've been, I got the COVID, and I got vaccinated, and I feel fine walking around with people, just like every day, just have no worries at all about catching the COVID. Doesn't bother me. I'm moving on with my life. There's a shot out there, that if you're worried about the COVID, get the shot. I don't know if anybody, at least I hadn't seen or heard, anybody got the shot, then got COVID and died. If you're worried about the COVID, get the shot. You're the faculty? They said, somebody, Dr. Galligan just said 60% of the faculty's been vaccinated, 40% have not. Yet, the vote was 90% for vaccination of the student body. Well, 40% of the faculty hadn't been given shots. Is that accurate? Is that not accurate? I see someone shaking their head that that's not true. So, if we have 100% of the faculty vaccinated, they shouldn't be worried about the kids having COVID or getting COVID from the children, from the students. So, you want to protect yourself from COVID, get the shot. If you're not worried about the COVID, don't get the shot. Simple as that, but pretty easy. Why are we trying to complicate things?
And Jay, just to break the numbers down, over, I think it's about 73% of the faculty have been vaccinated. The last 56, 57% of the staff had been vaccinated, and that's where that average comes from.
Oh, okay.
The student population was about 26, 27.
Well, you know, students generally are younger, and my, both my boys got the COVID. One's at LSU, one was in high school. In and out, didn't really bother them any, you know? I wouldn't, you know, they want to get the shot, they can. It's up to them, but, you know, there's a lot of things out there. You hear things, whether the shots might have some long-term effects on young people. So, you know what? Really, they feel like they want to get it. I'm not telling my kids they have to get the shot. And it, I wouldn't want to tell anybody's kids that they got to get the shot to come to LSU. If you're worried about COVID, get the shot. You want to come to LSU, come to LSU. Now, you can, we can encourage you to get the shot, but I'm not telling them they got to get the shot to come to LSU. It's not right, it's not fair. You don't like it, get the shot. That's, you don't want to get the shot, don't come to work. That's good. Thank you.
Mary, does that mandate faculty, academia, and the kids, or that just does the kids? That a resolution, that everybody?
The resolution acknowledges, we've received the resolutions from the faculty and the Faculty Council, then it's from LDH, then we're asking LDH to make it.
So, we're mandating to everybody or just the kids?
I'm sorry?
Oh, in our resolution, are we mandating to everyone or just the kids?
No, we're not mandating anyone in this resolution.
Well, if it's, if LDH does it, everybody's going to have to get it.
But they have the legal exceptions.
It would be, if our resolution is to encourage LDH to put it in the schedule, if it's put in the schedule, then it would be one of the expected vaccinations for students to register, but they would be able to opt out just as they can now by signing a note.
I think what Mr. Mallon is really asking is if we mandated for the students, I heard the president give a statistic that faculty and staff were at 60-something percent vaccinations. What good does it do to mandate for students if we're only going to have 60-something percent vaccinations for faculty and staff? So, if the goal is to have our version of herd immunity, I'd make a distinction between students, faculty, and staff for vaccinations. And that's, I mean, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with mandating vaccines at all. I know we do it in this country, and it's when the, when the federal government negotiates a process, permanent type deal, not an emergency use type deal. I know that the resolution made that distinction. I get that. Still not very comfortable with mandating, but I have been vaccinated, I encourage people to become vaccinated, but if we're going to vaccinate people, I make that distinction between students. Do we have an answer?
Well, we do. The resolution asks LD, there isn't a statute that mandates that employees be vaccinated at all. There is a statute that mandates that students be vaccinated. And Winston can help me out. Measles, mumps, meningitis, polio, smallpox, hepatitis, and something else that we don't, there's some, diphtheria. So, those are all mandated now. The list that provides the mandate comes from the Louisiana Department of Health. That's the reference to the statute in the resolution. So, the resolution is to add the COVID-19 vaccine to the list applicable to students under Title 17, when they, can I finish? When they enter, and I think the faculty have overwhelmingly spoke, the students have overwhelmingly spoke, and we believe, I believe, this would have a powerful, positive impact on our vaccination rates, and our vaccination rates are a concern to our faculty, our staff, and our students, and they're a concern to us, because we want the safest campus we can possibly have. Even with the mandate, you can opt out for religious reasons, you can opt out for medical reasons, you can opt out for philosophical reasons. But, but I at least believe there would be a positive impact if we said, if it's on the list, and it's not till it's fully approved. But I think, and I appreciate and respect your positions on this, but your positions are also true for polio, diphtheria, measles, meningitis, and everything else on the list, which is, which currently mandated. So, those are my views, and thank you.
I just don't see, even if we got 100% vaccination from students, why would we not require the same for faculty and staff?
Yeah. I think you could certainly, we could certainly have that conversation.
Well, why don't, why haven't they already done it? Being they over here asking it, and it's so important, why haven't they got their own faculty to get the shot before coming up here and asking us to mandate it to the kids?
I think they've actually done a pretty good job.
Well, let's mandate, let's, rates are really high. Let's vote to mandate all faculty and staff to get the shot. Let's do that. See what the participation rate is then. If it's 100%, then bring your issue back, and maybe we can vote on whether we're going to make the students. I'll make a motion that we mandate all faculty and staff to get the vaccination, both shots before school starts.
There's another motion.
I'll make a motion to that. I'm on the committee.
I would.
Can you help us with this, Mr. DeQueer? This motion situation, because he just made a motion, and there was one previously stated.
I'll make a substitute.
I'll make a substitute motion then. Can I do that?
Well, I'm not sure. You can withdraw your motion and then reurge it.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion and make a substitute motion that we mandate all faculty and staff to get the vaccination prior to start of school.
Isn't, isn't it Mary's motion?
Mary's was a resolution she wants.
Oh, okay. So I guess then I'll go to the substance of it. I'm concerned, Jay, I understand the spirit of which. I'm concerned that, we've got General Counsel because they can give us advice here.
I agree. Would they probably illegal too? Okay, so that talks about the absurdity right now, what we're dealing with. And I don't want to pass a resolution that if they pass all of these things and that LDH puts it in their rules, then come to us about, then let's talk about it. But I don't want to just say, oh, well, if y'all do it, then automatically we're going to do it. Why are we doing that? It seems like we just keep kicking the can down the road. Let's just say we're not doing it. And when LDH does something, bring it back and we'll entertain it.
Thank you, Mr. Blossom. Mr. Dampf?
I think the issue is whether or not we want to have a resolution that encourages LDH to put the COVID vaccine on the list. And simple as that.
It is simple as that, but what?
And then communicate, and the third part is then to communicate to our campus, which is faculty, staff and students, all to get vaccinated.
I mean, it would be like.
I mean, it's like, it was like in the forties, sending people out to go get the COVID vaccine.
I understand all of that. But everybody ought to be well aware of COVID-19. If you don't, haven't heard of this disease, the pandemic, and you hadn't heard there's a vaccine out there, you live under a rock. So there's a vaccine that prevents and protects you, protects you from the COVID. Get the shot and move on. I mean, if you don't want to get it, don't get it.
Excuse me, Jay. Let's read the resolution. If the, do you have a problem if the resolution is exactly what they're stating? Could you please read the resolution one more time for all of us?
Yep, happy to. There's three parts to the resolution. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of LSU A&amp;M does hereby acknowledge and receive the resolution of the A&amp;M Faculty Council pertaining to the requirement of COVID-19 vaccinations for students.
That's part number one?
That's part number one.
I got no problem with us understanding that they sent us a resolution. I got that.
Be it further resolved, the Board urges and requests the Louisiana Department of Health to include upon full approval by the FDA, the approved vaccinations for COVID-19 in its schedule of immunizations required for attendance at Louisiana public colleges and universities.
Okay, I don't like that.
We're just asking them to put it on the list.
I understand that they, people can ask them and not ask them, but I'm sure they're aware of it. I don't, I don't think it's as important, but go ahead, read number two.
Part three. Be it further resolved, the Board endorses the use of a communication and incentive strategy to encourage the campus community, which I would assume campus community, Mr. President, faculty, staff, students.
Absolutely.
To voluntarily, voluntarily vaccinate against COVID-19 until such time as the Louisiana Department of Health shall add COVID-19 vaccinations to its list of required immunizations. So we're just encouraging people voluntarily to go get it.
I'm good for that, except the last line. I don't like us sending a message that we want the department to just go ahead and add it to the list. That's, I got heartburn with that. But look, I'm only one up here.
Are there any questions or comments about the resolution presented? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the resolution? No move? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zeuslog. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. We do need a roll call vote for this. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Excuse me, Ms. Jones, I think Mr. Zeuslog.
I was the second.
I think it was Mr. Armenter.
I'm sorry. Mr. Armenter seconded?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Aguilera?
Yes.
Ms. Armenter?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson? Ms. Blossom?
No.
Mrs. Sarnes?
No.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
You have four yeas, three nays.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Griffith. That concludes, the motion is approved. That concludes the business of the academic committee. Is there any objection? Well, let me get a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Aguilera. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any objection? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chair, this concludes the committee, academic committee.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, will you please convene the finance?
Thank you, Finance Committee. We had a informative discussion of the agenda items. Mr. Blossom and I were on with our staff and previously this week, so we've reviewed those and we're prepared to address them. And I'd like to ask Mr. Collet to please leave, please read the roll. Thank you. Ms. Griffith?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Aaronson? Ms. Blossom?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mrs. DeQueer?
Here.
Chairman, there's.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffith. And Ms. Torres, would you please come forward to go over the Finance Committee, Agenda Items? There you are. And then, thank you. And I'd like to just address the committee that in this time, we'd like to go over all these items, take them one at a time, and then we'll vote at the end unless someone has, has an objection and would like to discuss a particular item. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The first item is approval of the fiscal year 21 supplemental appropriation and the fiscal year 22 appropriation. Each June, the Board authorizes the distribution of supplemental state appropriation prior to the end of the current fiscal year and the distribution of next year's state appropriation prior to the start of the new fiscal year. The Board approves the university's annual operating budget at their September meeting. This item and resolution addresses the first of these steps. Additional information on the fiscal year 21 supplemental appropriation and the current status of the fiscal year, fiscal year 22 appropriation is included below. The House Bill 516 of the 2021 Regular Session provides amended appropriations for fiscal year 21. The supplemental appropriation bill provided an additional $31,602,94 for fees and self-generated revenue, $10,000, $10,560,000 for general fund direct appropriations, $150,847 for interagency transfers from the minimum foundation program, and $271,774 for statutory dedications. And all of these are listed out in the resolution. I can go over them if you would like.
No question or comments? Go to the next item, please.
Okay. The next item is a request from the Health Science Center in Shreveport to approve the fiscal year 21, 22 expenditure of the Carol W. Feist Legacy Funds for the Feist-Wiler Cancer Center and to make a determination of acceptable university purpose. The Feist-Wiler Cancer Center is an administrative support component of the LSU Health Sciences Center in Shreveport. The Health Science Center requests Board of Supervisors approval for expenditure of $5,960,000 in Carol W. Feist Legacy Funds. The legacy account was established from the request of Carol W. Feist to support cancer research at the Feist-Wiler Cancer Center at the Health Science Center in Shreveport. The matter is before the Board in accordance with the affiliation agreement and related court order, which requires budget request in excess of $1 million to have Board of Supervisors review and approval. The campus suggests that the requested expenditure funds will provide support for the programs in basic and translational research, clinical research and cancer control and prevention, request for intramural grant support, FWCC research infrastructure and enhanced support for clinical research needs, seed packages for faculty recruitment and retention and expansion of space equipment for patient-related efforts. Pursuant to the uniform affiliation agreement actions taken, those, particularly those involving transactions in the nature of capital expenditures must be found to have a university rather than foundation purpose. The funds provided for in this approval would have a positive fiscal impact of $5,960,000 on the campus and we request authorization and approval of the budget.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is a request from LSU Alexandria to approve a cooperative endeavor agreement with Acadian Aviation Pilot Training Center to offer flight training in conjunction with the newly development professional aviation degree program. LSU A proposes to enter into the CEA with the Acadian Aviation Pilot Training, the only FAA-approved Part 141 Flight School operating in central Louisiana for public purpose pursuant to Article 7, Section 14C of the Constitution of the State of Louisiana. Under the terms of the agreement, Acadian will offer non-exclusive flight and ground training to LSU A students enrolled in the professional aviation degree program. Students enrolled in the aviation degree program will take courses offered on the LSU A campus taught by LSU A faculty in addition to grounded flight training taught by Acadian. Course fees for the program were approved by the Board earlier this spring. The specifics of the arrangement and operational guidelines are outlined in the attached agreement. Course structure and fee information are attached as well. The initial term of the CEA will be five years within an option to renew for an additional five years upon mutual agreement of both LSU A and Acadian. There is no cost to LSU A or LSU to enter into this agreement. Annual gross revenue collected from course fees is uncertain at this time. Revenue will be based solely on the number of students registered in the associated courses and will be used to cover all expenses related to the course offering. Course fee revenue will be restricted to expenses directly associated with each course offering with flight instruction and flight school cost.
Well, we've heard this program highlight the groundbreaking.
Yes, we did.
Very, very, very exciting. Would you present the next item, please?
The next item is a request from LSU Alexandria to approve a tuition exemption process for large group enrollments for exclusively online degrees at LSU Alexandria through LSU Online only. LSU Alexandria is following up on the previously approved tuition exemption approval for LSU and is requesting the same approval for the LSU A online degree programs. The purpose of the exemption is to set forth consistent guidelines for tuition discounting exemption for large group enrollments made directly through an individual corporation, company or organization. The tuition discounting exemption is in alignment with mechanisms put into place at other institutions for large business partners who commit large numbers of students who or who offer exclusive promotional opportunities to employees for a period of time to gain their credentials from LSU Alexandria. This proposal is exclusively for fully online degree and certificate programs managed by LSU Online and Continuing Education at LSU Alexandria. The fiscal impact will be based solely on the number of partners and subsequently the number of employees of each partner, and the fiscal impact is unknown at this time. The CEA has been reviewed and approved by LSU Online and by General Counsel.
No comments? Would you present the next item, Ms. Torres?
Those are the items that require Board approval. The final item is information only.
Well, we'll go ahead and vote on this then, if that's okay.
Perfect.
Do we have a motion to accept the items as presented?
So moved.
A motion by?
I second.
By Mr. Zeuslog, second. Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blossom made the motion. So is there any discussion on the items as presented? If not, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Now, if you'll give us a report on the pharmacy, please.
LSU entered into a contract with Med Impact Pharmacy that began January 1st of 2021. And it was requested by the Board that LSU provide updates on the performance of the new pharmacy vendor. And this is the first of those performance updates. We're happy to report that Med Impact Pharmacy claims have resulted in a savings of $3.6 million for the period January 2021 through April 2021 as compared to the same period under Citizens RX. The claims under Citizens RX for that period were $10,826,000. The Med Impact claims were $7,194,000, resulting in the $3.6 million in savings. We additionally, because of the COVID year of 2020, looked back to 2019 to ensure that there wasn't any kind of phenomenon with the 2020 data. And in 2019, the Citizens RX claims for the period January through April was $9.7 million as compared to 2021 with Med Impact, the $7.1 million. So even comparing this calendar year 19 to calendar year 21, there is still a significant savings. And in talking with the plan administrator at LSU, we feel like the savings for the year will be approximately $8 million. I had conversation with Mr. Morris, I'd like to ask if you'd like to add anything?
Well, I think we also looked at the number of prescriptions that were filled between the two time periods.
Correct.
And even though there was a drop in total cost, the total number of prescriptions were more than 19. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Morris. And if, if we look at the number of prescriptions filled, the count for all claims was $128,000 for fiscal year 21. And if we look at the same time period for fiscal year 20, there was a significant decrease during that time. So even though we have filled more prescriptions, we have these significant savings.
What about, what about employees' feedback on their service that they're getting? Have you had any feedback on that? Have you had any feedback on that?
The employee feedback has been positive. There are pains when you transition anytime from one vendor to another, but the impact to employees was basically seamless.
Nobody's been denied drugs.
Nobody has been denied drugs. That's correct.
Well, thank you, Ms. Morris. Appreciate you looking into this. And, Ms. Torres, thank you for the work that you've done. This is a real improvement in savings, and the savings will go back into the plan reserves, correct?
Correct.
And that'll either eventually be used for premiums, hopefully premium reduction or offset increases, or in reserve for future claims.
That's correct.
Any questions for a good report? We like positive feedback like that in results. Thank you. If no other comments, let's, we accept the motion to adjourn the committee. Mr. Chairman, is that appropriate now?
I move that we adjourn Finance Committee.
Mr. Blossom in second, or second?
Second.
For Mr. Mallett. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we're pressing you into double duty today.
Okay. All right, we're good.
We're missing Mr. Woods. If he'll handle the property and facilities.
Yeah. Mr. Woods was unable to attend, and we have both reviewed the and discussed the agenda items, and we are, want to go ahead and present these to our board for approval. Ms. Griffith, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Woods? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Aronson? Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Chairman, there's a call.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, would you present these items, Ms. Torres?
Yes, sir. The first request is from LSU A&amp;M to approve an Act 959 project to replace the roof of the LSU Student Union Building. LSU Planning, Design, and Construction is requesting project approval for this roof replacement. The union consists of two major roof areas, the Theater and Main Building. The roofs in both areas are experiencing leaks, which are causing damage to interior spaces. In 2005, a 10-year sprayed-in-place top coat was applied over the Main Building, and the Theater Building roof has not been replaced in over 30 years. A roof condition assessment was conducted by an outside consultant, which outlines the overall condition of the roof. The scope of the work will involve removing the existing roofing and installation of a new roofing system. The roof condition assessment supports a recommendation for installation of a new roofing system. Due to the age and condition of the existing roof, repairs are not feasible. The project will be funded entirely by self-generated funds. Design of the project will be undertaken by private contract upon receipt of all necessary administrative approvals, and all construction work will be publicly and competitively bid. Act 959 of the 2003 regular legislative session establishes the requirements for exemption from inclusion in the state's capital construction project. A university or higher education facility is allowed to undertake any new construction, maintenance, or repair project not exceeding $5 million that's solely funded from self-generated revenues, grants, donations, or local or federal funds without being included in the capital outlay bill, provided the project is approved by the appropriate management board, Board of Regents, the Division of Administration, Office of Facility Planning and Control, and the Joint Legislative Committee on the Budget. All of the parties relevant to the approval and construction of this project don't have any related interest in this project, nor will they receive any financial gain. Related transactions will be approval by the Board of Regents, Office of Facility Planning and Control, and the Division of Administration, and the Joint Legislative Committee on the So we have a request that would approve the project and process the project through the appropriate administrative channels of review and approval, namely Board of Regents, Division of Administration, Office of Facility Planning and Control, and Joint Legislative Committee on the Budget. We estimate the total project cost will be $2.4 million. We also request authorization for the president of LSU or his designee to approve the plans and specifications for the proposed improvements and to approve cost increases up to 20% of the amount approved to accommodate unforeseen conditions. And finally, we'd like to request authorization that the president or his designee is empowered for, and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, to take such actions that he may deem in the best interest of the board to process and obtain administrative approvals for this project.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is a request from the LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans to approve execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the LSU Health Foundation New Orleans and the LSU Board of Supervisors for adaptive reuse of Stanislaus Hall as a nursing home facility. The Health Science Center New Orleans proposes to enter into a CEA between the LSU Health Foundation New Orleans and the Board of Supervisors for the lease of portions of the Stanislaus Hall and the ground parking lot. Approximately $43,317 square feet will be leased pursuant to the agreement by the board to the foundation for a one-year term. In addition, the foundation will be granted the right to utilize 16 parking spaces on the surface lot adjacent to the leased premises along Gravier Street and three parking spaces located near South Claiborne Side entrance of the leased premises. The purpose of the agreement is to provide space to the foundation in which the foundation will sublease the building and parking to St. Luke Foundation, Inc., who will at its sole expense construct improvements which, upon termination of the agreement and acceptance by LSU, be donated to LSU in accordance with the agreement. St. Luke's Foundation will use the building as a nursing home facility. This adaptive reuse of the building will improve the financial position of the Health Science Center New Orleans by providing rental income from and reducing expenses of this lightly-used facility, and will provide elder care and geriatric real-world training for students, part-time employment to both students and faculty, and potentially a contract for dining services. The fiscal impact of the lease will provide a source of revenue to the Health Science Center in the amount of approximately $620,000 a year. The improvements are expected to be valued at approximately $216,000 to the building, in exchange for which the Health Science Center New Orleans will grant an equivalent credit against the rent to be prorated over the first two years of the agreement. The foundation will also assist the university and student body in recruiting Health Science Center New Orleans nursing, allied health, public health, medical students, and other LSU students to apply for part-time job opportunities at the nursing home. The foundation will also work with deans, faculty, and school administration in forming academic training programs in the fields of elder care and geriatric care to train students for potential future jobs. A summary of the revenue and offsetting expenses is attached in the resolution. The revenue that is derived by the board from the agreement will be deemed to be dedicated revenues within the meaning of the board's general bond resolution, which is adopted January 21, 2000. The legal documents, review of legal documents have been done by state and sponsor document. The request is for the CEA to be entered into for the portions of the hall and the parking spaces that I previously described, to authorize the president of LSU or his designee, in consultation with General Counsel, to act on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to include the project, any and all provisions and stipulations that are in the best interest of the board, and to agree or authorize that the revenues within the meaning of the general bond resolution are deemed to be dedicated revenues.
Okay. Next item, please.
The next item is a request from LSU A&amp;M for authorization to negotiate and enter into a property lease with Alpha Tau Omega. In August 2020, LSU authorized the Alpha Tau Omega fraternity to sublease the Lambda Chi house located on LSU's campus, which was vacant as a result of Lambda Chi being suspended from operations by its national headquarters. Previously, Alpha Tau Omega had a chapter at LSU but did not own a house on campus. At the January 15, 2021 meeting, the board authorized Pi Kappa Alpha to acquire the former Lambda Chi house and enter into a new lease with the university for that land, and to simultaneously terminate the previous lease between LSU and Lambda Chi with Lambda Chi's consent. Alpha Tau Omega has continued to control the house pursuant to the August 2020 sublease, which was assigned to PKA as part of the transaction. PKA continues to own its own house on campus. However, it intends to move its operations completely to the Lambda Chi house and seeks to terminate its lease for the Pike House with the university. PKA has reached an agreement with Alpha Tau Omega to permanently transfer its interest in the Pike House and the related ground lease with LSU to Alpha Tau Omega. LSU must approve this assignment of PKA's existing lease rights, similarly to what was done in January with the PKA acquisition of the Lambda Chi house. LSU would then simultaneously execute a new long-term ground lease with Alpha Tau Omega and a termination of the existing ground lease with PKA for the Pike House. Alpha Tau Omega will be obtaining financing of approximately $1 million for the transaction, which will be secured by a leasehold mortgage on the new lease with LSU. This also requires LSU's consent. The Pike House property will be leased to Alpha Tau Omega through its housing corporation, Epsilon Zeta House Corporation, for an annual rent of $10. This is the same rate charged for all fraternities and sororities who have built houses on LSU-owned properties. Alpha Tau Omega's housing corporation will be solely responsible for all costs associated with acquiring and operating the house. The project will provide student housing and meeting space for Alpha Tau Omega members at no cost to the university, so there's no fiscal impact to the university. All documents and related transactions use standard LSU templates developed for similar transactions. All legal agreements will be reviewed by the Office of General Counsel prior to execution by the president.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
And the final item is a request from LSU A&amp;M for authorization to authorize a sublease between Pi Kappa Phi and Theta Chi. Pi Kappa Phi fraternity has a house on LSU's campus. Currently, the house is unoccupied because Pi Kappa Phi has been suspended by LSU until May 2023. Pi Kappa Phi would like to sublease the house to Theta Chi. Theta Chi is a recognized Greek student organization that does not have a house currently on campus. It's common for a suspended Greek organization to sublease its house to another organization. It's in LSU's interest that no Greek house is left unoccupied for an extended period of time, and the sublease provides a source of revenue to the suspended organization to ensure that, once its suspension is over, it's able to return to campus and its house will remain in good condition. The sublease will be for a term of three years, ending in May 2024. LSU's Office of Student Life has no objection to the sublease from Pi Kappa Phi to Theta Chi. At the same time, Pi Kappa Phi has requested approval to permanently assign its lease with LSU from Gamma Iota Housing Corporation to an entity which is a subsidiary of their national housing corporation. The new permanent lesssee would be PKPP Gamma Iota LLC. This is not uncommon as fraternities at the national level revise and standardize their property portfolios across the country. It does not impact LSU or its rights and obligations from and to the organization. LSU will first consent to the permanent assignment of the ground lease from Gamma Iota Housing Corporation to PKPP Gamma Iota LLC. Then LSU will consent to the temporary sublease of the PKP house to Helping Hand LLC, the dedicated housing corporation for Theta Chi. The project will provide student housing and meeting space for Theta Chi members at no cost to the university and no fiscal impact to the university. The sublease adds value to LSU by preventing the PKP house from going unoccupied during the period of its suspension. All documents for these related transactions will use standard LSU templates developed for similar transactions. All legal agreements will be reviewed by the Office of General Counsel prior to execution by the president.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
You're welcome.
With that, we will accept the recommendation to approve the resolutions. Anyone from the committee who'd like to make the motion?
To move.
Okay. Mr. Mallett, a second?
A second.
Yes, sir. Mr. Starnes, okay? All in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Resolution.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
We need another second from a committee member.
I'm sorry, why?
We need a second from a committee member.
Say another second.
Second about Mr. Armentor.
Okay. Thank you. He's on the committee. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Griffith. So all in favor? No opposition? The acceptance of the resolutions approved. And with that, we will adjourn the committee with a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Armentor, I think.
Mr. Morris, I'm sorry.
He's the one.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. Yes, sir. Mr. Armentor, so all in favor?
Aye.
The committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Brown. Mr. Morris, please convene the healthcare and medical education.
Ms. Griffin, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Mr. Blossom?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Mr. Zeuslaw?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you. We only have one item to discuss today, and I'm going to ask Dr. Lewis if he would present that item.
Thank you, Supervisor Morris. Our joint venture in Shreveport, Oshra LSU Health of North Louisiana, which I'll remind you is a 501(c)(3), sorry, a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit, is seeking $300 million in taxable bonds. The broker is Citibank. We are seeking taxable bonds as opposed to tax-exempt bonds to give us more leeway and to put these on the balance sheet. Currently, our organization, which is our partnership, runs about 20 days cash on hand. With this $300 million, this will get us up to about 130 days cash on hand, which is an industry standard. The close The closing date for these bonds is July 27. It is a 10-year bond, and we have not been rated yet. We're expecting that within the next week or so. But we have presented both to Standards &amp; Poor as well as Moody, and we're being told it's going to be a minimum of a BBB+, which translates to about 4.5% interest. There are no specific capital items that this bond is earmarked for. I will point out that the only way that we spend money is by approval by the board, which is 50% LSU and 50% Ashner. Recently, in fact, last week, we approved Mr. Morris to be the ex officio member on that board, and he participates usually with each of our board members, as does Mr. Brown. I want to point out that neither Ashner Health System nor LSU is responsible for these bonds. This bond is totally and solely the responsibility of Ashner LSU Health System. There have been a number of individuals sitting around this table that have been involved with the discussion on this, including general counsel, Ms. Torries, and a number of other people. So that's it, Mr. Morris.
Any questions related to those bonds? Those bonds, I have a question. Those bonds are going to be secured by, how are they being secured? Through the?
I'm sorry?
Physical plant? How are those bonds being secured?
The joint venture is going to place a mortgage on St. Mary's.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't think we need any resolution. Thanks, Doc, for the report.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any objection to concluding the committee meeting?
I think we...
Second.
Thank you, without objection. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris and Dr. Lewis. Welcome. We're happy to have you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Warner, will you please convene the athletics committee?
Sure. Ms. Griffin, would you please call the role?
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag? Madam Chair is appalled.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Chancellor Paul Carell to present items 1 through 6, one at a time. And unless there is an objection at the end, we'll take one motion to adopt all of the items. Chancellor Carell, thank you for the hospitality and having us all here today. It's been a beautiful morning and a great day to be back here at LSU-A. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
For presenting the items.
Thank you very much. The only coach that we have currently that has a contract is Coach Larry Cordera, the basketball, head basketball coach. And in order for our coaches to use the facilities for sports camps, which is a really great recruiting tool for us, we have to have a contract. So we're just trying to abide by the requirement that contracts be in place. Additionally, the office of general counsel helped us include in that the Title IX requirements now that LSU is following, and that we'll have that in place, which further advances our efforts to address Title IX. So each of these coaches that we have, including Coach Cordera, we have to renew his contract. It expires in June, and we're now going to subsequently have contracts for the head women's basketball coach, Robert Austin, the head softball coach, Adam Birch, Larry Cordera, men's basketball head coach, Melinda Discant, the women's tennis head coach, and Michael Porpat, our men's soccer head coach. Currently, our women's soccer head coach is vacant. So we'd like the board to allow us to do this. It really would help us to do both, do our recruiting with the student camps that we have, as well as update the Title IX requirements in the contracts that we're going to approve.
Outstanding. Does anyone have any questions? Is there a motion to approve the items presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Griffin, would you please call the role?
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Eight yeas, none opposed.
Thank you so much, and those contracts have been approved. Chancellor Clark, would you present the next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is a renewal of the contract for our athletic director, Lucas Morgan. I am really pleased that, under Lucas Morgan, the cumulative grade point average has gone from a 2.64 to over a 3.0 over the last two years for each semester, including our basketball team being around 2.88. We went to a program of trying to, so we want student athletes, but student being emphasized in how we form the teams. And doing so, we still have had a total of 18 championships within our athletic conference, which is the same one as this one. So we have had in his time. We also have had 13 national tournament appearances. We were in the NAI Baseball World Series this year, and he is on the NAI board as athletic board in an distinguished position. And besides the grade point average, which I'm very, very pleased by what he has done, the level of community service is outstanding as well. And I will give the fact that they're very good at athletics also, and they do community service, and they are emphasizing athletics also. So I'll just not say it's, but it's particularly to be over 3.0 for some 130 student athletes for four straight semesters, when it was 2.6 when he came in. It's really great. And we had our contract also reviewed by general counsel's office to make changes as well.
Very good. Any questions? Motion to approve?
Not a question, but a comment. That is amazing, Dr. Clark, and congratulations on that. I mean, the grade point average to be at 3.0.
Isn't that terrific?
3.0, that's awesome.
I couldn't be prouder of them. And we had them before the downtown Rotary Club, as some representatives, they spoke, and it was just a standing ovation by the Rotary Club. That would be true, that student athletes would be the leaders as they are on campus. But we made that a real focus of what we're doing in recruiting of student athletes.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Thanks. Ms. Jones, a second. Mr. Blossman, thank you. Ms. Griffin, will you call the role, please?
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Seven yeas, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. Before we get to the next item, I'd just like to congratulate. I think this competition within the family is fantastic, and most importantly, as Dr. Clark pointed out, is that we have, I see across all three, Shreveport, Alexandria, and UNIS, our student athletes really working hard, one, in the community, but, two, seeing grade point averages go up, and the same at LSU A&amp;M. And it's really inspiring to see these young people who, you know, get a lot of glory but take a lot of criticism as well, working hard to be exactly that student athlete. And I commend all of LSU and all of our athletic departments for really putting an emphasis on their academic success and their future. Very few will go on to professional careers, and if they do, they're not lifelong. So our job is to educate them for a career and their livelihood in the future. So congratulations to all three institutions on that. The next item will be presented by LSU Deputy Athletics Director Stephanie Remp.
Good afternoon. Am I doing NIL or are two?
NIL.
Okay. Okay, so we are asking for the board to approve a board policy that supports all the LSU system schools for the implementation practices for all the schools when it comes to name, image, likeness. So I think you all have the policy in your packets. This piece of legislation that is happening nationally, and the one we're talking about is in Louisiana, is the most transformative piece of any change in athletics in the history of college athletics, or at least since Title IX. So it's a really important thing that is happening across the country. So Louisiana passed SB 60, which went through the House and the Senate. It is now being, now we're waiting on the governor to sign it. So if the governor signs it and this board passes the board policy for implementation policies, it will go into effect. So we are requesting your support for the policy, and I'm happy to elaborate on name, image, likeness. I think everybody understands it's the opportunity to generate money off of your name, your image, or your likeness as a student athlete.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Remp. Obviously, we want to support our student athletes, but we're entering a new world here. My question to you is, what is the athletic department doing to kind of anticipate some, maybe some not seamless transitions to where the law intends us to go from where we are now? And does that involve hiring extra staff or what? What does the structure look like for dealing with the complexities of going forward with this new policy?
So I can speak about LSU A&amp;M, but obviously, every state in the country that is dealing with this, and all the schools in Louisiana, are working to solve it. So for us in our athletic department, we've had an NIL working group that's been in place since the fall. We do have a consultant that has helped us with a lot of this. Right now, we're working on our educational pieces, but as we have said before, this truly is building an airplane while you are flying it. So it is still very unclear. What we are working on is the Louisiana bill, because there is not federal legislation, and the NCA has also not decided what they are going to do. So we are working on how to roll out NIL when it comes to the way Louisiana bill has set it up. So it's lots of educational tools for our student athletes, our coaches, and our staff. In terms of staffing, we have not added any staff at this point. Right now, we're working on the way that the kids are going to let us know when they hire an agent, how they're going to let us know when they sign an NIL deal, because they're going to be required to do that. And so we're working on some of those processes and putting those in place, so when July 1st hits, that we're ready. And then the bill also requires that there are five hours of education for our student athletes, and so we're working on a lot of that as well.
Thank you. You raised something, raised a question with me. The NCAA hasn't taken a position on this. So are we concerned that we're getting out in front of them and they're going to sit back and maybe second-guess some things that we did? And is that creating any exposure?
So they have taken a position. They just have not passed a, they haven't passed legislation for it. So there's a number of things that could happen, probably four or five different things that the NCA could do. And they could do something in the courts to stop this. They can let the school, I think the bigger concern are the schools that don't have a state bill, and so what do those student athletes in those states do? But right now, if our state allows us to do this, the NCA has said that they will allow, they are not going to, you know, punish the kids that are signing these deals.
Stephanie, how will you all at the A&amp;M campus collaborate with the other campuses in an effort to make all of this work?
Well, from the athletics department level, our compliance office has reached out to the different, to the different schools in the state and also in the system. We are happy to help do whatever we need to do. I do know the, I think it's the regents potentially have talked about the law schools getting involved in the state to help all of the schools when it comes to education. But yeah, we're happy to help any way we can.
I meant specifically with the LSU, the other schools in the LSU system, if there was a goal to work collaboratively across athletic departments?
So at this point, I don't know if there's a goal to do that. We are happy to help any way we can.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm looking at the resolution on the number four institutional responsibilities. It talks about a post-secondary education institution may prohibit an intercollegiate athlete from using their NIL for compensation if such opportunity conflicts with an existing institutional sponsorship agreement or contract or goes against the values of the post-secondary educational institution. Who's going to determine, you know, the values of the post-secondary education, educational institution?
So each institution will do that. So there's a variety of different ways when you're talking about institutional values. We will determine, as an athletic department with campus, what our recommendations are for that. The bill says that you can't do NIL deals with tobacco, gambling, or alcohol, so those are already set in the bill. But then we obviously have to deal with, when different opportunities come to our student athletes, what things conflict with what we think is appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Morrow? I edited that provision. If you look at the asterisks, what we intended to do initially, where it says institutional values shall be based on the current limitations and parameters placed on organizations and products, we actually have limitations on our current sponsorship agreements with sports properties. We have rules on certain things LSU will not sponsor, and so we were simply trying to incorporate those into this.
Okay. Great.
Because we already had some limitations that the folks who sell our sponsorships have to abide by. So for now, we were just looping those in.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Blossman and Ms. Jones, seconds. Ms. Griffin, would you please call the role?
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Seven yeas, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. Ms. Remp, we would like to take items nine and 10 together, so if you would present both of those, and then we'll take the vote.
Okay. We are asking for the approval of Satia Messer's term sheet. Satia Messer is an associate head coach for women's basketball. She has come to LSU from Baylor. The second one is Brad Davis, our offensive line coach, who we hired from Arkansas. And both of them, we would like for their term sheets to be approved prior to their contracts being done up.
Thank you. Y'all received the term sheets prior. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Hi.
Mr. Zuschlag, a second?
Second.
Ms. Jones, thank you. Ms. Griffin, would you call the role?
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Seven yeas, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Most is good. Thank you, Ms. Remp. We appreciate you being here today. I'll present the next two items, which I'm very excited to talk about. First, I would like to present a resolution honoring the LSU-UNIS Bengals baseball team on winning their seventh national championship. To commemorate their outstanding season, that the LSU-UNIS baseball team, and congratulate them on this national championship. The team finished with 51 wins. Coach Jeff Willis achieved his 900th win on his way to the national, to coaching this national championship. The board congratulates Chancellor Sorensen, Coach Jeff Willis, and his staff, and the outstanding baseball team on their seventh national championship, and making all of LSU very proud. Chancellor Sorensen, would you like to add any comments to this?
Yes.
Please.
If you all don't mind. Getting back to what Larry said about the grade point average and the emphasis on service. Obviously, since this amazing championship, our baseball coach and athletic director, Jeff Willis, has been in the media spotlight on many different platforms. But I really have to commemorate what you have also said about the students being prepared individuals. That has been his philosophy that he has brought to coaching. It is amazing to me that in a school of 3,200 students in the Acadian Prairie, that we are the number-one national championship winner in the entire United States in Division II. But it's that philosophy of developing our student athletes as hu- But it's that philosophy of developing our student athletes as human beings, as good men, as good leaders, that inspires me as the chancellor. He brings that to, in the way that he recruits other coaching staff to come on and we have, and encourages them to translate those same values into all of our student athletes. Our student athletes have a GPA, combined GPA, that is over a 3.00. And many of them have been recognized singularly for their academic achievements. So it is truly an extraordinary type of achievement. We hope to keep things going. It was a real thrill for us to bring the team to the House last week at the legislature to have a resolution read by the House. They were featured in the Senate. They got to meet our governor, John Bell Edwards. It was quite inspiring. And it was even more inspiring to actually be at the championship in person, to watch them go beyond the pale. 14 innings, they only tied it in the, in the end of the ninth inning and to take it down to the last out of the 14th inning. They never gave up. And it's that resilience, that strength, that motivation that they were not going to allow it to be called over. And mentally, they, they just had that strength to get beyond that. So I really thank you all for the resolution and support. We look forward to, in the very near future, perhaps bringing capital projects to you to improve our athletic facilities, which is sadly, sadly, sadly overdue. The quality of our facilities looks more like a high school in comparison to our peers that we play against in the NJCAA. So we think that we have some great momentum going in order to get that done. So I really thank you all for this recognition.
I had the opportunity to, opportunity to attend just, I think, barely 48 hours after they arrived home. And they arrive home on a bus on that long trip back from Oklahoma. And to sit in the room and listen to the, the men who are leaving the team, we call them sophomores because we're a junior college, but they would be the seniors, 10 of them stand up and talk about the life-changing experience that Jeff Willis had given them and how they all felt like they had become men under his coaching and his encouragement and all that he's done. He also coached three All-Americans on that team. So quite a lot of accomplishments and we are just all very, very proud of everything that happens there and that Jeff is committed to staying and doing the work that he does and raising his family in that community.
Yes, I am especially grateful for that.
He is sought after and he has bombarded with many, many offers. Yes. So we hope to keep him for a long time.
We hope so.
So with that, back to the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Jones?
Second.
Mr. Brown, seconds. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Seven yeas, none opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is approved. Next, I would like to present a resolution honoring the LSU men's track and field team on winning the national championship just a few days ago. We are proud to congratulate the LSU men's track and field team for winning the 2021 NCAA outdoor national championship. Four student athletes won first place in five events, along with a team victory in the four-by-100-meter relay. Congratulations to Coach Dennis Shaver and the 2021 national track and field champions. On this note, and I'll ask, allow for comments as well, I'd also like to say that beginning today, 18 of these athletes, along with 12 former LSU track and field athletes, begin their quest at the Olympic trials to represent the United States at the Tokyo Olympics. Trials begin today and run through the next few days. So we wish them all the best. Are there any comments or anyone would like to add anything on this resolution?
Yahoo!
Go Tigers!
Go Tigers!
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Morris, Mr. Brown, seconds. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods? Ms. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Seven yeas, none opposed.
Thank you. Resolution is approved. Is there a motion? This concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Zuschlag, second.
Second.
Mr. Morrow, any objections? Hearing none, the committee concludes its business. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, ma'am. And you're back on duty. Also, would you please convene the Title IX and Compliance Committee?
Absolutely. Papers here. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Aguilera?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Madam Chair is upon.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Dr. Jane Cassidy to please come forward and present the report to the committee today.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for saving time on the agenda for an update on the progress we've been making in the Office of Civil Rights and Title IX. Since my last presentation to you about two months ago, I've met with dozens of students, staff, and faculty, as well as community stakeholders, in an effort to hear about the impact sexual misconduct has had on their lives and to discuss how we can do a better job. There is great clarity and consistency from those meetings that we have two overarching opportunities to focus on as we do our work. The 18 recommendations from the Hush Blackwell Report consolidate into these opportunities as well. The first and most immediate has been support for survivors in the form of resources, information, and implementing a trauma-informed process to handle reports of sexual misconduct. The second is an opportunity for prevention of sexual misconduct through education and culture change. I can say in all honesty that the progress we have been able to make is due to a campus commitment to change. The progress I report on today would not have happened without the dedicated help of student organizations like TASSA, FEWAI, and Student Government, faculty groups like representatives from Women, Gender, and Sexuality Studies, the Graduate School, College of Music and Dramatic Arts, and Faculty Senate, and administrative units such as HRM, Community and University Relations, Facilities, Procurement, Budget and Planning, LSU Online, Student Affairs, Student Health Center, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, LSU Police, Title IX coordinators from all the LSU campuses, and General Counsel. Additionally, the depth and breadth of our collaboration with athletics has been inspiring. And it goes without saying that the support of the President, Provost, and Chief Financial Officer has been critical and unwavering. At the risk of unintentionally leaving a group off the list, and if I did, I apologize, it is important to me that you see the commitment of our community to reducing the instances and impact of sexual assault and violence and making our campuses safer for learning and working. As I did at the last meeting for efficiency, I've grouped the 18 recommendations from the Hush Blackwell Report into five themes. I'll talk briefly about the progress since the last meeting in each of those areas. Nicole, if you could forward to the first. The first one is operations. At this point, the group of recommendations is mostly about continuing to hire. Since the last meeting, we've hired four people and are working on at least two more. With one additional hire, we will have completed the minimum recommendations, one, two, three, and four. Nicole, if you could advance? We've been able to hire, as a consultant, Daniel Swinton. Daniel comes to us from TNG Consulting Firm. He's with us for three months and is a national leader in Title IX. He's involved in, at the national organization and has helped us with everything from getting the processes up to speed, to helping with policy, to actually serving as the Title IX coordinator. So we've got another month with him, and then he will be replaced by a permanent hire. Asha Murphy came to us. She's our case manager. She comes to us from the Student Health Center and has a lot of, she is a mental health counselor. And so her, what she brings to the table for students and faculty and staff who come to our office will be amazing. Next. Arlette Henderson is our investigator. She's been on the job for two weeks, but Arlette has done a lot of investigative work for the student, in the Office of Student Affairs. And she has dealt primarily with students and code of conduct, but she, so she's expanding her portfolio. Susan Behrish, you might remember from the Hush Blackwell Report, the one shining star from the Hush Blackwell Report was Lighthouse. Susan is, is the director of Lighthouse. Her role now is 100% in the Lighthouse program as a director, and we are hired, the Student Health Center is hiring two people to be with her group. Next. Jenny Stewart, who is in our office, she is currently now the ADA coordinator. Jenny brings a lot of experience with, historical experience with Title IX on our campus. And Kelly Eglon is our new assistant to the Vice President. Kelly comes to us with many years of experience, executive administrative experience in the public school system, and she actually has worked in mediation and also in, with restorative justice. So everybody together fits in well together as a group. The second one is process. These three recommendations will largely be completed when the revised Permanent Memorandum 73 goes into effect by the end of the month. This policy, based on federal and state law, guides the process we must use in dealing with instances of sex and gender-based harassment and discrimination. It provides the framework for campuses to follow, but also leaves room for some details within the process that could be individualized by campus. There was a meeting convened by Commissioner Kim Hunter-Reed on Wednesday to discuss the results of an audit of campus policies with regard to Title IX. The recommendation was to provide a template for the policy such that campuses would adequately address all the component parts of Title IX. I want to thank President Gallagher and Chair-elect Starnes for being there and for their acknowledgement of the work we've been doing to shore up our policy and for their recommendation that we not be required to use a template if our policy meets the standards required by the Board of Regents. I want to assure you that every one of their requirements will be fulfilled and detailed in our policy. Next. One. So if you look at, if you were to read the policy as it's coming, I've given you a few bullets here of some things that are in the Hush Blackwell Report that said we needed to improve. In the policy, there's mandatory reporting to the Title IX coordinator that's clarified with consequences, i.e. people will be terminated if they don't. Exceptions to mandatory reporters is clarified. Supportive measures for survivors is outlined. Alternative resolution processes offered and formalized, including restorative justice. The hearing panel process is described, the appeal process is described, reasonable and presumptively appropriate timeline is delineated, and the recommendation that presumptively appropriate sanctions be developed on each campus is included as well. Next slide. For training and education, this will be a far-reaching and ongoing focus area for us. We are partnering with external entities who have expertise in the areas we need to provide educational opportunities on for everyone in our community. Next slide. As examples, our Title IX staff has already, has already had some intervention, sorry, some instruction with regard to sexual trauma and domestic violence. We have a full-day workshop that's coming up next week, I believe, at which the Title IX coordinators from all the campuses have been invited to attend, and many of them have said they will. We've had training sessions on our record-keeping, we've had workshops on restorative justice. In athletics, just to name a very few, they've had some, I want to say training in sexual trauma, but some instruction in sexual trauma and domestic violence by STAR. They have a bystander intervention program. They've worked with a Call to Men on the Healthy Manhood Program, many, many others. Our campus leadership has all had the same STAR professional development in sexual trauma and domestic violence. Campus community, our annual training for employees is in the final revision, the new curriculum is in final revision. LSU Online is going to actually put that together for us. It will be available for any other of the LSU campuses that want to use it. We're doing it for our campus, but it will be done so that you can use it if you want. The annual training for students has already been updated, and we have a fall campaign being organized by students to get the word out about a culture, excuse me, a culture change. The next, the partnerships, Hush Blackwell has provided some professional development for us. Maxient and Ethics Point are the two systems that we use. We've gotten professional development for them. TNG and Attixa, that's Daniel's group, so they've provided some, some help with training our case manager and our investigator. Iris and STAR, of course, our local domestic violence hotlines and provide training for us. And the Step Up Group is the bystander intervention group that provided the information for, for One of the Hush Blackwell recommendations in this group articulates special care and attention on cases involving student athletes. To that end, athletics has hired a senior-level administrator who's a formal Title IX coordinator and an attorney, who will be a liaison to the Office of Civil Rights and Title IX. They've also hired four additional staff members to ensure everyone in athletics is trained, educated, and understands the department's commitment to a safe and healthy culture. There's been significant training already for student athletes, staff, and coaches with a consistent message from the athletic director that a commitment to diversity and inclusion and the prevention of sexual assault and domestic violence is in the fabric of the athletic community at LSU. The amazing work they are doing to educate our student athletes and the athletic staff on prevention of sexual misconduct, clarity in reporting, and resources for survivors has been spearheaded by Executive Deputy Athletic Director Stephanie Rem, who, as you know, is here today, and I'm sure she would be willing to answer any questions you may have. The fourth is record-keeping and reporting. We've done a deep dive into our record-keeping and identified and fixed almost all of the gaps in our record-keeping process, as well as tweaked the reporting system itself. The quality of our data and information are greatly improved. We're gearing up for our first quarterly report, which will be presented to incoming President Tate the first week in July. Athletics completed climate surveys of their student athletes and staff and are using the results to guide their education and training decisions. Next. Last is communication and accountability. The message is out and clear. Reporting of knowledge of sexual abuse or violence to the Title IX office is mandatory. We've seen an uptick, as expected, of reports in the past few weeks. Thanks to Jewel Hampton and Community and University Relations, we have a beautiful icon we now use to identify resources for survivors. You can see the Hands Around the Heart icon on this slide that accompany all of our Help is Here content. Next. We're a week or so away from launching a completely revamped website that will have much more content for survivors, parents, alleged perpetrators, and supporters that link to resources and information on sexual assault and violence, as well as the actions our campus is taking to keep our community safe. I'm not going to go to any of those, but if you go to these three websites that are highlighted there, you can see, you can see the progress that we've made on those. But what I want to do is to go to the next slide and show you that our students and you have access to an LSU mobile app. And if you see the left picture there, there's a little square, it's a purple square with LSU. If you press that, you get the second screen. And I'm sorry you can't see it from here, but on the top row, the fourth icon is the Hands Around the Heart. And if you press that, it says underneath it, Support Services. If you press that, it takes you to the third screen, which is, gives you immediate access to, to the resources, and it also has a place where you can make a report. So students all have it in their hands. Next. And this is not easy for you to see either, but this is, this is on all athletics computers with all staff in the Department of Athletics. There's a little thing that looks like a bug at the top of that, which is an icon that says Title IX on it, and if they click on it, it takes them immediately to the place where you file a report. So everybody in athletics knows how to get to the report. And the next one is Navigate is a, an app that students use to make appointments with their academic advisors. You can't see this well either from here, but in the, in the bottom of the two cell phones there, the red dot in the middle, it allows you to press it and make a confidential appointment with somebody in our office if you want to talk with somebody about the Title IX process. And finally, we've been following the four bills put forward by Senators Barrow and Mizell and Representatives Reiser and Freeman. We've been clear in our support of all of them, which have been sent to the governor for signature. With the adoption of the revised PM 73, we will meet all of the requirements of mandatory reporting and handling of report of power-based violence that will be in the laws. With that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. And I did enjoy seeing you at that Title IX meeting at Regents the other day. Thank you for participation. I recall a conversation about a training session that Regents suggested, and they asked us to host it. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts on that? Have we progressed beyond that suggestion that the commissioner and others made to us?
I didn't know that it was a formal request. I thought it was just...
Maybe it wasn't. They, it was suggested.
We are, we are ready, and we will, we would love to host people on our campus to talk talk about Title IX. We've got a conference room. We can make other rooms available. We would love to do that.
They haven't reached out yet, but we'll welcome them when they do.
Oh, I mean, they, they all said it to me. I didn't hear, I don't know if they've made a formal request.
No, they haven't yet.
Okay. Well...
We would love to host.
I would like to do that, too.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So the trainings that are taking place on the main campus are also happening across the other campuses as well? The trainings that are being developed?
Right. So two things. One is we're hosting a workshop, an all-day workshop on sexual assault and violence. And all of the Title IX Coordinators from all of the campuses have been invited to attend that. And I believe, I want to say many, I know many of them are, I think most of them are, are doing that. Also, the, what we're putting together for the mandatory training for employees is available, we will make it available to any campus that would like it. It's that hour training that everybody has to do. We will make that available for any campus that wants to use it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Cassidy, you have done so much, and we just want to thank you for everything, especially the work across campuses, making sure that we are communicating out with, within our entire LSU family, because as we know, this is not something that's unique to the Baton Rouge campus. Unfortunately, sexual assault happens on every campus. We just happen to be in the spotlight, but thankfully, we've been able to lead the changes and hopefully lead the state in all of this, as well as really bring a spotlight for the nation of what's happening in higher education, and that we, LSU A&amp;M, and all of LSU will now be the shining star in best practices, taking care of our students and our faculty and our staff and all those who visit our campuses and work and live on our campuses. So thank you for all the work.
Can I just jump in and say, I think about three months ago, I, I said that Jane Cassidy got things done. And, and, and so Jane, thank you very, very much. And Stacy agreed with me, and Stacy and I just want to say, we told you so.
Absolutely. We're happy to take that one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
So moved.
Mr. Armentor, second.
Second.
Ms. Jones, without objection, the committee has concluded its business. Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much, Ms. Werner, and I want to join in thanking Dr. Cassidy for the absolutely wonderful job she's done. So thank you, Jane. You've done a great job. The committees have now completed their business. The recess has ended.
Chairman, we had one item we overlooked on the athletic, on the property committee. Did we want to...
You want to reconvene that committee?
Yes, I apologize, but Ms. Griffith, would you call the Athletic Committee?
Property and Facilities.
Excuse me, the Property Committee, excuse me. Do we need to reconvene the committee?
Yeah, reconvene, it's Property and Facilities, I think.
Property and Facilities, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you call roll, please?
Okay, Mr. Woods? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple? There's a quorum.
Okay. Ms. Torres?
Sorry, she needs, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones needs to indicate that she's here. What's... Ms. Jones needs to indicate that she's here for a call.
I'm sorry, here.
Okay. Ms. Torres, would you bring item number four, I believe, is the one we...
Certainly, and my apologies, I missed an item.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo, for calling it to my attention. There's a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve a consent to mortgage for the Sigma Chi fraternity. This is a ground lease between LSU and Sigma Chi. And pursuant to the ground lease between LSU and Sigma Chi, Sigma Chi operates a fraternity house on LSU's campus. In order to finance the construction of certain repairs and renovations, Sigma Chi intends to borrow approximately $150,000 from the Constantine Housing Initiative, and the loan will be secured by a leasehold mortgage on Sigma Chi's lease with LSU. Under Section 10 of the lease, the written consent of LSU is required for such a leasehold mortgage. House of the Southern Woods, the housing corporation for Sigma Chi, will borrow $150,000 from Constantine Housing Initiative for a term of five years. The debt will be solely the responsibility of Sigma Chi. LSU is not a party to the loan and will have no legal liability for the debt. The debt will be secured by a leasehold mortgage of the leasehold rights Sigma Chi has from LSU pursuant to its lease as amended and assigned in 2018. There's no obligation or expectation for LSU funds to be used in any way to repay the debt. The consent for the leasehold mortgage has been approved by Sigma Chi and is still being reviewed by LSU in its Office of General Counsel and is subject to change. All documents will be reviewed by the Office of General Counsel prior to execution by the President.
Okay, thank you. No comments or questions? Entertaining motion to accept the resolution?
I move to approve. I'm moving.
Mr. Mallett, second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Morris, no objections, this motion is approved. We have a motion to convene our committee.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Motion to adjourn was made by Mr. Mallett and seconded by Mr. Morris.
Right here, okay. No objections.
The day is getting long, I can hear.
It is, I agree. Okay, the day is long, so we will go as quickly as we can. The committees have now completed their business. The recess has ended. The board will be reconvened for our approval of the minutes of the board meeting of April 10th and May 6th. These minutes have been previously provided. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, I'll accept a motion to adopt the minutes.
I move.
Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Zuschlag. Any objection? Without objection, that is approved. We will move on to personnel actions. The first action is to approve the employment contract for President William Tate. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, Mr. Starnes has made the motion to accept the contract, seconded by Ms. Jones. Any comments or questions? Do we need a roll call vote on that one?
We can ask if there's any objection, and we can record how each person votes.
Okay. Is it, without objection, it's approved? Was there any objections? Sorry, the day is getting long.
We can record how each person...
Without objection, it's approved. I haven't heard any objections.
I would say that one deserves a round of applause. I'm just setting you up for the next one.
That, that requires a cup of coffee for me. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Moro?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The contract is approved.
Yay.
Okay, now for the next one. We can't thank Tom Galligan enough for his service. I've, I've had several opportunities to have a microphone in front of me and, and say those things, and we have all, all of us on, this is very much of a working board, and I know that, obviously, our chancellors are hard workers. So we all know what a fabulous job he has done. So I am asking for a motion that we confer upon President Tom Galligan, the title of President Emeritus.
So moved.
I move.
Moved by Mr. Zuschlag, seconded by Mr. Moro.
Mr. Armentor.
Mr. Armentor, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Armentor.
It was a race.
Any comments, Mr. Armentor? I'm sorry, Ms. Werner?
Mr. Chairman, I wholeheartedly endorse this motion and would just like to say, as the person who knocked on Tom Galligan's door back in December of 2019, and he probably wondered why I was coming to visit two times in a row, but cannot say enough for the work that we did together and through an unprecedented year in many, many, many ways, starting with a great national championship and then sliding downhill quickly with COVID. But all the leadership that, that Dr. Galligan, Dean Galligan gave, President Galligan gave to all of us, to all of you, because I've heard time and time again, especially from our chancellors of all our campuses, from the Ag Center all the way to Shreveport, New Orleans, that never had they seen LSU pull together and work so hard. And that is all due to Tom Galligan's leadership through an unprecedented global pandemic, and then to bring us out of that pandemic and to take the hits for something he was not in leadership when things happened with Title IX, but to stand in front of the legislature time and time and time again, representing this great university for all of that. And I have to say, for someone who sat next to you through most of that, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. But it's a team.
It is, but...
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to let everybody know that for several years, I've been calling Tom Galligan a rock star. I never realized how right I was until I realized that he was the rock star that we could not have done without in the last year. So, Dr. Galligan, thank you for everything.
Thanks.
Amen. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Moro.
I just want to echo the comments of my two colleagues and just say, we're going to miss you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Come see me anytime.
Paul, did you have...
Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of comments. President Galligan's first meeting was here at Alexandria, and his last meeting is going to be here in Alexandria, so it'll always be a special place for you here. And in honor of that, our faculty and staff wanted to give you a small token. I have a little deal under here I've been hiding, and I'll go ahead and pull it out so people can see it. It's a hat, just like the governor got.
I could have used that this morning.
And it's also, when it gets cold this winter, which it's not cold now, I got him a nice little jacket.
Thank you.
We want to make sure he remembers us as he goes back to being dean. I understand you're going to be taking sabbatical first, so you can wear this when it's cool in the fall. Thank you so much.
Is there a motion to name President Tom Galligan as President Emeritus?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Blossman, seconded by Mr. Zuschlag. Any comments?
Yeah, I want one comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mallett.
I've had my rounds with him, and I'll, I'll tell you, in my lifetime, you have the best demeanor of anybody I've ever taken with. You always agree to disagree, and I admire that about you. I really do.
Thanks.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Dean Mallett. The...
What'd you say?
The dean of the board.
I'm glad you recognized.
After you told me 17 times, I did catch one.
It's the truth.
We need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson?
Yes.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Moro?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Four yeas, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We have a request to approve a personnel arrangement at LSU Health Science Center. Dr. Golly is returning to the faculty, and this motion will allow him to be paid the remainder of his contract. So I need a motion to authorize the President to amend Dr. Golly's contract and allow him to return to the faculty.
I'll say, Mike, second.
Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Malice, Mr. Malice, sorry. Any, any comments or questions? Hearing none, we need a roll call vote, I think, on this one.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Moro?
Yes.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, none opposed.
Thank you. That motion passes. For our approval, we have received two reports, a quarterly investment report and a third-quarter informational report. These have been previously provided. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to accept these reports? Mr. Moro, seconded by Ms. Aguilera. Any comments or questions? Without objection, any objection? Without objection, these reports are accepted. We have two notices of bylaw changes that the board intends to take up at its next meeting. One proposal is related to actions of the board. The other will be about authorities, committees, and other changes. These proposals, proposals will be distributed to the board well in advance. Next, we have the Faculty and Staff Advisors' Report. Professor Robinson will present on behalf of the faculty advisors.
I'm, I'm Mandy Lopis, not Professor Robinson. I'm the LSU Faculty Senate President. First and foremost, our LSU faculty wish to express their gratitude for President Tom Galligan's leadership over the last 18 months. His commitment to shared governance is admirable, and he has never failed to advocate for faculty at every turn. We're grateful for his unwavering support during some extraordinarily challenging times for our LSU. So, thanks, boss.
Thank you.
Next, we look forward to meeting with incoming President Tate. The faculty very much appreciate the transparent selection process and opportunity to meet with the president finalists over breakfasts. We hope that these procedures for LSU leadership searches will be established as the standard for future hires. The faculty thank the board and past chairperson Werner for the resolution encouraging COVID vaccination, COVID vaccination, and requesting the LADH to add the COVID vaccination to the list of, to the vaccination schedule once it reaches final FDA approval and is no longer under emergency use authorization. Thank you very much for that. The faculty continue to insist that a faculty representative be added to the Board of Supervisors. Their reluctance of the board to facilitate this seems contrary to its mission and the, and the faculty that are central to that mission. The faculty are frustrated with what they feel or what they perceive is a longstanding lack of commitment of, by the board to the academic mission of, to our academic mission. They remain available and ready to engage with the board and to, and we sincerely look forward to working together to continue the recent positive progress. Finally, the faculty note with some distress that valiant efforts to improve diversity, equity, and inclusivity at our LSU, despite those efforts, access to graduate programs by foreign graduate students, and administrative support upon their arrival remain marginal[1738.66] by foreign graduate students, and administrative support upon their arrival remain marginal at best. The faculty ask that the Office of Academic Affairs, Graduate School Registrar, and LSU International Services work together on a comprehensive, organized program to recruit, retain, and support our foreign graduate students. We must be more welcoming and hospitable to all if we are genuine about our DEI mission. I present this report on behalf of our amazingly talented, hardworking, and clearly dedicated LSU faculty, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Is the staff advisor representative? Yes, Ms. Wagner.
Hi. So, good afternoon. My name is Tequila Wagner, but I go by Kira. So it's really great to be here, to be amongst so many inspiring people. But, so my report will be short and sweet. Most of the things I'm going to report are about, like, employee recognitions and things like that. So for the LSU Baton Rouge campus, I would like to report that the Staff Senate President, Jonathan Levesque, I am not from Louisiana, so my accent might make it sound a little weird, but Jonathan Levesque, he has passed the gavel to Amber Salvadres, and her term will begin July 1st. In addition, we have Tammy Milliken, who has been chosen as president-elect, and then LSU Staff Senate Staff Stripes Award was awarded to six employees, and I'm not going to list them all, but I think that's pretty cool to award six employees, right? Also, they awarded a scholarship to staff members who are enrolled as students and dependents of staff members who are enrolled at LSU and A&amp;M. Okay, so now I'm going to move down to the Law Center. The Law Center has seen a significant increase in applications as a lot of law schools, as a lot of law schools across the country have, so that's good. And then for LSU UNIS, so they always have a lot of really fun things going on. Like, right now, they're doing national days on campus where they do things like National Peace Day and just National Paper Airplane Day. So they have, like, the staff on campus creating airplanes and just kind of bringing a nice sense of community and making everyone feel really positive and happy. And then LSU Alexandria, we had our employee recognition dinner, and Dr. Abby Bain was recognized as Boss of the Year. In addition, we were able to give one person a scholarship, like a staff member that is currently in school, so that was really nice. We weren't able to give that much because of fundraising. We weren't able to do fundraising because of the COVID and everything like that, but we're hoping to really push it this year and help at least two people on campus. In addition, we had our Juneteenth celebration, which was really great. So it was good to see so many come out, and it was really great food. Oh, and then also for LSU Alexandria, we are working on elections for their leadership. I know more about LSU Alexandria, of course, because I'm the president of Staff Senate, so, but yeah, that's our report, and if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Without hearing of any questions, thank you very much, Ms. Wagner. We appreciate it. We will now accept a motion to accept all the committee recommendations except for the COVID. We will separate that out for further conversation, but I'll accept a motion to accept all the other committee recommendations.
I move.
Mr. Zuschlag, seconded by Mr. Morrow, and without, are there any objections? Sorry, wait. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, those reports and recommendations are accepted. Then we will take up the COVID resolution, and we'll have more conversation. I know we've had a good conversation, good discussion about it. We can, is there a motion to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like a little more conversation.
Yeah, no, I think we need to make the motion first, and then.
Motion to do what?
Well, we need to.
The resolution was asked.
The resolution passed the committee. That's right. We're voting on whether or not to accept the committee recommendation. So that floor is open. Mr. Mallett.
Since the last conversation, I've had somebody who contacted LDH. Tulane has already asked LDH to put it on the vaccination list without FDA approval. If we make the same request, we would have the same thing happen to us. So I have a problem with it for that, but the other thing is, if you want me to support it, why can't we add the statute that you brought up where they can opt out? I think they need to know that, too.
That's in the statute.
Yeah, my understanding is that we're.
The resolution.
But if it were before the resolution, I could support it.
Yeah.
That there's an opt-out clause based on statute.
Yeah, the opt-out clause is a matter of Louisiana law.
Title 17.
I get it, but I think if we're going to make a resolution, I would, I would want the university overall to know that we have an opt-out clause. We know about it because you told us that today, but a lot of people don't know, are not privy to that information.
The opt-out clause is in the current law regarding vaccinations and will apply. It's applied in the past, and it will apply going forward. There is another House resolution that already requires if we promulgate information about the vaccine, we have to let folks know it's voluntary, it's emergency use.
I hear you.
But both of those issues are included in a House resolution and state statute.
Why, what's wrong with making it part of the resolution so that everybody knows about it?
Mr. Mallett is talking about referral to the law.
Oh, yeah, the board could do that, yes. Yeah.
That's all, I can support it. As long as, as long as they all know that they can opt out.
Yeah, there's no issue with that.
It could just say, I'm just doing the lawyer thing, the unlicensed lawyer thing. It could say in the second paragraph, if you've got it in front of you, write it right before the end, before the semicolon, "and will inform students of the relevant statutory opt-outs."
I can deal with that.
Okay.
Jay, you okay?
I'm not okay, but I could go with it. I just, what did you say about Tulane?
Do we need to reread?
What did you, what would you?
Tulane has already made a request to LDH to put it on the vaccination list without FDA approval and probably will be accepted, but I'm okay as long as the kids have the opt-out, know about the opt-out, I'm okay with it.
They gotta know, they gotta know about it to make it easy.
Let's read the, let's read the, Ms. Werner, do you have the resolution?
I do.
Let's let Ms. Werner jot it down. We'll get her to read it, and we'll vote on the resolution.
Read the whole thing or just the section we're amending?
I would run through the whole thing, just so everybody understands. It's three parts.
Agreed. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agriculture and Mechanical College does hereby acknowledge and receive the resolution of the LSU A&amp;M Faculty Council pertaining to the requirement of COVID-19 vaccinations for students. And be it further resolved, the Board urges and requests the Louisiana Department of Health to include upon full approval by the FDA, the approved vaccinations for COVID-19 in its schedule of immunizations required for attendance at Louisiana public colleges and universities, and will inform students of the relevant statutory opt-outs. Be it further resolved, the Board endorses the use of a communication and incentive strategy to encourage the campus community to voluntarily vaccinate against COVID-19 until such time as the Louisiana Department of Health shall add COVID-19 vaccinations to its list of required immunizations.
Okay, Ms. Werner, you're making that motion, or no, actually, to approve, to accept the committee report.
You should probably have a motion because it's as amended.
A motion to amend, is there a second?
To accept approval as amended.
That's correct. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mallett. All in favor? Any discussion of that?
I don't have any more, I'm just still going to be, no, I just, I don't think we.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mr. Storans?
No.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Arminter?
Yes.
Ms. Aronson?
Mr. Blossman?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Temple?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Nine yeas, two nays.
That motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I will call upon President Tom Gallagher for the President's report.
Thank you, Chair Dampf, and I promise it will be brief. First, happy Juneteenth to everyone. Second, Paul, it is great to be back in Alexandria. I essentially started my service as interim president here and am essentially concluding my service as president here, and it's an honor, and I'll put the hat to good use. We heard this morning from the governor, we've got the best budget for higher education we have had in about 20 years. So we really owe thanks to the governor, to the legislature, and to everybody's GR teams for working that very, very hard. And we could talk about all the great things in there, but for me at least, what's great is there's a faculty raise pool, and all of us are also going to find staff raise pools because our faculty and our staff deserve increases incredibly from all the great things that they have done over the last 18 months and beyond. So that's fantastic. I would say, reflecting back on my 18 months here, you know, we're in a pretty darn good place. We have a lot of momentum. Research is good, philanthropy is good, academics is good, record enrollments across the board. When you talk about our various units, we're all seeing record enrollments, record diversity, and record levels of achievement by our students, and we're all really, really proud of that. And we look forward to many years ahead and continued success under the leadership of our new president, Dr. William Tate. Nobody is happier that he is coming than I am. As I think you know, I'm looking forward to going back to the Law Center, and, Paul, you said dean, but it's not as dean, it says professor. It's the best title that I have ever held, and now I have, I have gotten to that high level again, and I'm happy. Susan and I are going to go visit our kids and our grandchild in the fall. Rumors are there may be another one on the way soon. I don't know, I'm not allowed to talk about it. And then I will return to teaching in January. Serving as president of LSU really has been one of the greatest honors and privileges of my life, and I want to thank you all for your support and your encouragement since I took the helm in January 2020. Mary, you were really kind, everybody's been really kind, but it is a team effort. This is absolutely a team effort. We do it all together. I've enjoyed working with all of you. I'm touched and honored that you removed the interim title and made me president at the last meeting retroactively, which for us lawyers means nunk pro tunk, right back to the first day, and today awarding me emeritus status. It really is an honor. Thank you, and please come find me at the Law Center if I can ever be of any assistance or you want to buy me lunch. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
I got 20 pages of great stuff going on on these campuses that we got to make sure get into the minutes.
Thank you very much. Very briefly, I have no nunk pro tunks for you, but I do want to thank Paul and all of his team here for hosting us with a groundbreaking ceremony, the party last night was delightful. Certainly, we appreciate the governor being here. I want to congratulate Dr. John Van Cherry at LSU Health in Shreveport on a $24 million grant he just received for COVID testing. I want to congratulate Paul Minari upon his retirement from LSU baseball and the great success and the wonderful job he did representing LSU. I also want to recognize Greg Guzik, who received NASA's Outstanding Public Leadership Medal, and this year, we've had a Harry Truman Scholar, a Goldwater Scholar, a Udall Scholar, a U.S. Department of State Critical Language Scholar, a NASA Astronaut Scholar, and 11 National Science Foundation graduate research fellows. Lastly, I want to thank Tom again, and I will continue to thank Tom and wish him the very best. I want to remind everyone that we have a, our next meeting is on August the 6th. We have a one-day seminar scheduled for August the 5th, so please hold that day, you'll be getting more information about that. But that is all I have. If there are no other comments, I'll accept a motion to adjourn, Mr. Morrow and Mr. Brown. So without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Go Tiger.